Welcome to our meeting. The date is August 6, 2024. The time is 6:00 p.m. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The City of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Present.
Councilmember Kaczynski.
Present.
Councilmember Hasi.
Present.
Councilmember Sheard.
Present.
Councilmember Pollock.
Present.
Councilmember Fitzki.
Present.
Council President Stelk.
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson.
Present.
Councilmember Landfair will be absent. Councilmember Conley.
Present.
And Mayor Still.
Present. Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Laura McAlune, the city administrator, Patrick Brown, the assistant city administrator, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, Keith Kurtz, the public works director, and Matthew Gleason, the finance director. We'll start our agenda with for a fiscal year 2025, public works engineering administration and MPO budget proposal. Good evening, Mr. Kurtz.
So I'll kind of kick off the presentation tonight based on or starting with the engineering and the admin portion of public works. These are the kind of the areas we'll focus on tonight. MPO, transit, street, solid waste and wastewater. So for the fiscal year 2025, personnel services for the engineering and admin. Overall, as you can see, we're looking at a slight increase for the whole. Engineering is up a little bit. Obviously, that's mostly due to increases in steps and insurance costs. And the admin portion of public works is actually down a little bit. We're accounting that towards the payroll taxes on that line item or that area were overestimated last year, so that made that budget look a little higher than what it should have been. So our operating expenses, this portion of public works obviously doesn't have a huge operating budget. Very small purchases and whatnot. As you could see, we're down just a little bit basically for basic items such as copiers and phones, so nothing too critical in that area. Overall, our budget, as you could see, engineering is a little over a million. Approximately 275,000 of that is recovered. We account for all of our time. If we're working on a certain project with a certain project budget, we'll bill that time out. There's some minor review, plan review fees that we also collect that cover a little bit of money back towards this area as well as some minor permitting fees that they don't make up a ton, but they are accounted in these figures. Majority of the work is not billable just because the nature of the department, we're either investigating problems that citizens have or building new projects, investigating things kind of before we set a budget for a real actual project that you guys would approve. There's a certain amount of time that's spent in this department looking at those issues to decide if we need to move forward with a bigger project that would show up in the budget in a future year. And then, as you can see, the next line item, admin, a majority of that area is recovered through fees that are charged back to wastewater, solid waste and streets. One item that we put in here for next year, this was kind of, we kind of all discussed it internally about where the best place to put this. We kind of put it just in the general public works area more as a placeholder than anything in a budget. Back, it's probably been six months ago or so, we talked about the street fleet facility that we currently have and some of the deficiencies that we have. So we kind of kicked around the idea of do we budget something in case either a property that is existing that we might be able to retrofit or expand or remodel would come available or if some land that we thought might be a good fit for this in the future might come available that we would be able to account for that budget. Obviously, those purchases would be brought back to council prior to doing anything on that, but sometimes those things not fall into our lap, but they just make sense. So we did account for that in this, in this location again. I don't know if there's any questions or comments on that, but that's what this slide is for.
Mr. Nickerson has a question.
Of course, I have a question, Keith. You know I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
I was just doing the math here because that was about 30 acres, if I remember right, that we were for the full size. Is that about right?
Yeah, I think about 20 acres is kind of where we were looking to be approximately. Yeah.
So this is, well, based on 30, this is $50,000 an acre. And if we're going to plan on 20, now we're up to 75,000. Is that, is that what this is about or is it more than just the land? Because that's some pretty hefty prices, I think.
I would agree. And with land, I think, obviously, you probably know as much as anybody, but it will be dependent upon location and whatnot. So obviously, just pure land, this would probably be high. Again, unless it's just a perfect spot. This accounts for if something did come available, commercial property of some nature that might be either a building that we could add on to or use or, you know, maybe part of that could be a storage building or a street fleet shop or something. It's not necessarily just land. Again, this is kind of, this is kind of just a guess at this point. Just because that's the budget doesn't mean we're going to go buy land that's $75,000 an acre or whatever the numbers work out to be. So.
Okay. Patrick, your thoughts on this? Does this make sense at this point?
Absolutely. So we always go just a little high just so that we have room. Hopefully, we wouldn't spend that much.
Shocking number, but if it's more than land, that's understandable if it should happen.
And something else to keep in mind with this number two, if a piece of property became available or we, something went on the market that we might think might be a good fit, I would probably look at doing a little bit of site planning and kind of making sure it fit what we needed. Not everything in the world is perfect square. You know, you'd kind of want to go through a little bit of due diligence, too. So, you know, some of that might fall into this, too, if we get to that point. So that is that portion. And go, go right into the MPO. Alan is, was unable to be here tonight, so I'll cover the MPO slides. Again, I think most of you guys understand what this division is about. Obviously, Grand Island is part of a MPO metropolitan planning organization. This was required by the federal government when we hit 50,000 people. It's required to get our federal funds. Eighty percent of this program is funded through the federal government as well, so we, we come up with the remaining portion of that. Again, transportation policy, we're planning, we're looking forward. It's, you know, allows for regional transportation and coordination between all the government agencies in this area. Total budget this year, $450,000. It's a little higher than it has been in the past. As you can see, our share is about 90,000. A big reason for that is we're coming up on the time that we need to renew or update our long-range transportation plan, and we also look at the travel demand model at that same time. So every five years, we have to go through this process. So while it feels like we just got done with the last one, we're already starting back again. So a big share of that is what is driving this cost up a little bit. I believe next week at council, the agreement for the consulting services for that travel demand model and the long-range plan will come to council for your consideration. So we're trying to keep that moving as well. So this, again, pretty basic. I think you guys have seen a lot of that over the years about what that organization does. It really helps us to look forward and coordinate things. For a community our size, every five years is probably a little too much because things move here, but not maybe as fast as some bigger communities. But those are the rules that, that we get to live by. So, anybody have any questions on that? No? Hearing none? We'll move on to transit.
Well, Mrs. Wallen.
I will start by just giving an overview of this past fiscal year. A little background, we do operate a demand response public transit service. Right now, we have 50 vehicles in operation, a mixture of ADA buses, the small cutaway buses, and just some ADA minivans. We are, we have ordered and are in the process of receiving the first ever non-ADA vehicles that we're going to add to the fleet. We've added two Ford Explorers, and those should be arriving in October. This past year, we published a request for proposals for a transit provider, and we did award a contract to a new transit provider, Brown Transit. It is the first urban-only operations contract that the city's ever been a part of. Previously, it was an urban and rural combination service. It felt a little unfair to give that single thing just one line, so I added in some more. We transitioned the maintenance program. It was previously done at Fleet Services, and Brown Transit is now providing maintenance, the drug and alcohol program, which includes all random testing requirements, getting everyone put into a new pool, the ADA program, and all the reporting associated with that, moved the entire fare system over. They've been making some pretty big changes to the fare system, among others. So the award of the urban-only operations contract was actually a pretty heavy lift, and it's gone relatively well. We did complete the first onsite monitoring of the new public transit contractor, Brown Transit. They are right now in the process of a workout plan, which is expected. So being brand new, there were some findings and creating some new policies and procedures, making sure things are done the way they're supposed to be. And lastly, we did order those first non-ADA vehicles for the public transit fleet. So we're hoping that they help improve response time for some of those non-ADA trips. We do, as part of the FTA regulations, do have to track our ADA wait times versus our non-ADA wait times and report those annually to make sure that our ADA riders are not experiencing an excessive wait time compared to our non-ADA riders. So that's a new thing we'll be doing now that we're purchasing non-ADA vehicles for our fleet. An overview of the expenses, contract services, which is our contract with Brown Transit. Administration and planning. Administration includes personnel and other administrative expenses, office, printing, et cetera. Capital, which is purchase of vehicles and vehicle equipment. The largest vehicle equipment purchase we make is the camera systems for each of our buses. So every time we receive a new bus, we have to purchase the new camera system for a total of $3,123,471. And the revenue, federal funding will be 1.9 million approximately. State funding, we apply to the state's PTAP program, which is a non-federal public transit funding program that the state has. So the state actually makes half of our operations match for us. The City of Grand Island will be coming into the fiscal year with a beginning cash of 198,000 approximately. This is from budgeting the full amount of the SCI contract and then actually ending operations with SCI in March, so there's a little bit of carryover. And then the match that will be going towards operations is 558,000 for a total of $3,156,172. Plans for the next fiscal year, we will continue purchasing new vehicles. We received a Ford Transit last week, which was very exciting, and we've been told there's two more that will be along very soon, which is very exciting. We began ordering those vehicles in December 2021, so it's a long, it's been a long wait, so we're very excited to see them coming. And we plan on continuing operations with our new transit provider. So this is really the first year that I can remember that we haven't had some sort of additional budgeted item other than operations. Usually, we have some sort of planning study that we're participating in. We were looking at building a facility for years, so we had other capital projects involved in there. This year is just primarily operations and purchases of capital.
Mr. Nickerson.
Early, have I ever told you how much I like the crane system?
Okay.
It's a good system, and I will always tell you that. I think it's one of the great things we have, and there's room that I know that you and the powers that be are looking at enhancing that over the years to come, and that's going to be great. But it's one of the best bargains we have in town here, if you know how to use the system. That's the thing, if you know how to use the system. A few things that stood out that I just have a few questions for. I was, you kind of answered one of them, that you were able to use non-ADA compliant vehicles. I didn't know if there was a ratio that you had to have so many to the other, so I was very surprised by that. But when I heard the word Explorer, that seems like an odd vehicle for, for transport. Is there a reason why they went with Explorers?
We were just researching, well, we looked at multiple vehicles, and we did invite our public transit providers administration to come with us since it would be their staff that would be driving the vehicles. They do all the maintenance on them, et cetera. The Explorer had a lot more room. The Explorer had four-wheel drive, which in the winter in Grand Island is very appreciated, especially since we try to keep the public transit system operating as much as possible during those snow days. And those Ford Transits actually have a very low clearance, and then underneath the chassis, there's kind of two points that hang very low and catch really easily. So we were hoping to get something that had a lot more maneuverability for the service as well. They were spacious, which our riders really appreciate, yet they, and another thing that the transit provider mentioned is the number of individuals that are riding with children. So that was kind of one of the reasons we didn't want to look so closely at a car is the Explorer has three rows of seats, and there's quite a few riders that have two and three children, and they're non-ADA riders, so this would have begun, would have been a good option, will be a good option for them.
Okay. The other question was, you talked about the lead time has been very excessive. Has there been any answers why that is such a long time? You hire, you buy it in 2021, and it doesn't get delivered until, you know, three years later. Did they explain what's going on with that? Is this still part of the whole pandemic supply chain thing or what?
Yep. The pandemic supply chain issue definitely exasperated everything that was happening. The best way I can explain it is that since these vehicles are purchased with federal funding, they're subject to Buy America. And when that happens on a vehicle basis, not only do the parts that are used in the vehicle have to be American steel, American glass, et cetera, but also, I believe it's 80% of this assembly has to be done in America. So if, if a single line at a Ford plant is behind schedule, they'll generally ship the work to a different plant, and it might be in Canada, it might be in Mexico, it might be in the United States. So with these Ford Transits, since they were Buy America certified, when that Ford Transit line got behind, there was nowhere else for the work to be sent. So the line literally just got ridiculous. Ford did cancel all orders that they had on order in December 2023. So we did come back to council with that contract because we had to re-up the contract price and essentially order again. So we did reorder everything in December 2023, and now we're seeing vehicles come through on that.
Okay. All right. Interesting. Finally, you had something up there about some fare system changes are being reviewed. What, what, is that something you can disclose or not disclose at this point?
Yeah, yeah. They've been working really hard. So essentially, the will call process is one of the major changes, and that isn't necessarily changed to a fare. But they have made some changes to the will call process in that they're requesting that all people schedule their trip home instead of calling for a bus to come for a trip home. And that allows the software, when it does its scheduling, to be far more accurate and to book trips, a lot more trips on the bus. They have also done away with the punch cards. So the punch cards were used on the bus for years and years and years, and we've had the new e-cards available, the QR code cards, QR code cards. We've had those available for a few months now, so they decided to move over to the QR codes card, and they also have an account option. So a person can upload money, money to their account, and then right when they board the bus, the driver marks that they boarded the bus, and it's deducted from their account, and the driver gives them an update and tells them you have $8 left on your account, et cetera. And they can always call into the office. So there was a transition from SCI to Brown with fares in that SCI had distributed large numbers of punch tickets to organizations, and, I mean, thousands of dollars of punch cards had been purchased. And so when the fare transition happened, Brown now has to report fares, and there's a lot of fares out there that they're reporting in a zero because they were purchased under a different provider, if that makes sense. So they really wanted to move over to the QR process, which is much more immediate, and get rid of those punch cards.
Is that user-friendly for seniors that are not used to all that kind of stuff?
Cash is still always accepted, and they have agreed to accept all punch cards that are in existence. And they have also agreed to continue issuing punch cards to some agencies that the people who make use of their service really need that sort of tangible, where they can see how many punches they have left, et cetera. So I think if, and of course, we have an ADA reasonable modification process. So if there's something that someone needs related to a disability, they need to see that taking down of rides as they go, we can accommodate that.
Thank you for all the good work that's going on with Crane System.
Next is fiscal year 2025, Street Division Budget Proposal. Mrs. Callahan.
Thank you. Good evening. Shannon Callahan, I'm the Street Superintendent. I will be going over the Streets Division budget, and then if there's no questions, we'll go to Fleet Services. Facilities, this is a slide we put up every year for a while, just kind of a general overview of our facilities. Of course, we've talked about the larger facility need, and we had a pretty good study session in March talking about that. Again, an overview of our seasonal operations that take place at the Streets Division, and these are some of the continuous functions that we perform throughout the year as needed. Update for our storm sewer cleaning program, the map to the right is, the red is what we have been able to clean or check to make sure it is clean, and the pink is what we have left to do. Here's a few before and after pictures to see what kind of progress we're making with these storm sewer pipes, and these numbers have been updated probably as of June this Pavement condition, this is the rating from November of 2022. This rating will get updated every three years, so we'll probably see another rating near the end of 2025. Lane miles, a quick update, we've moved to just over 966 lane miles in the City of Grand Island. Just a quick explanation, a lane mile is basically, you know, one single lane of pavement for a mile, so you get credit for all of those with N dot, and then that's how they use that number as part of their equation for our gas tax revenue that we receive from them. For example, South Oka Street between Shimmer and Wildwood is one mile, and it's four lanes wide, so we get four lane mile credits for that. Our operations budget this year, our personnel is down slightly. I think that's due to some turnover that we've had and some folks coming in at a little lower step. Operating is up just less, just a tick over 4%. Non-capital projects is down a little bit, and then our capital equipment, which we'll go over in a later slide. Personnel budget, we are not asking for any additional FTEs this year, so we'll be at the same staffing level as last year. Operating budget, this is the one that had about a 4% increase. That's mostly due to repair material cost increase. We're seeing that all around, anywhere from concrete, asphalt, lids for storm sewer pipes. Everything continues to increase year to year. We had some pretty big jumps after COVID. We are hoping that level out, and it has slowed down, but I will say the increases year to year still have been more than, than we had experienced prior to that. Non-capital projects budget, this includes our asphalt resurfacing project, a large contract we put out for additional concrete repair, and then some traffic signal and equipment upgrades. Capital outlay budget, this is what we're requesting for this year for equipment. We do have quite a few dollars that we're asking to carry over from this fiscal year into next year, items that have been ordered but will not show up on time. This asphalt zipper down payment, we have not ordered that yet. We talked about exploring some other financing options because what we had budgeted was a down payment, so we have rolled that over into next year so we can continue that discussion. Streets funding, this is some of our revenue sources that's used to fund the Streets Division Are there any questions?
Mr. Nickerson.
No questions, but I want to always commend you and, and the guys. I don't know how many gals we have. I mostly see men, so I'm going to say guys. And I've told Keith, but I want you to know as well that I really appreciate the work that's been done on the detention cells. I think they pay big dividends when we have three and four inch rains, and we see the effectiveness of them. And I think over the last 10-plus years, it's just been excellent work, and as I go by, many of them, they're trimmed, they've been, the cattails are not growing anymore like they used to in abundance, and that makes all the difference in the world. And then I really have grown to appreciate the crews that you have in town working on things, your concrete crew. I, once in a while, they get pestered by me because I see them on a project. I have to go say hi and see what's going on, and I really like to visit with them. And they all just do great work. I just, I get a kick out of watching what they do. I've learned some finishing techniques from them, and it's just a good thing. So we've got a good crew. You don't have a lot of turnover in that group, do you really? Or do you have more lately?
I would say as a rule, we do not. But here in the last three years or so, we have experienced a lot of retirements. We had a big group that retired all about the same time, probably about a six, seven month period. We lost a lot of historic knowledge with those folks, but they were very good about teaching all of us coming up, so that's, we're always very thankful for that. And then, so then there's that constant trying to backfill those positions. You have an internal promotion, you bring somebody up, then you got to fill what spot they were taking. So overall, I've been very pleased with the crews and how well they've been taking in these new folks and training, teaching, you know, being willing to share their information as well. We've got guys that are in some new leadership roles that are doing really good. So if you haven't noticed that we're, you know, had some turnover, then that, to me, that tells me that they're, we're doing a pretty good job, and the guys are really stepping up, so.
I think they even let the mayor help them once in a while, don't they?
I didn't hear you.
They let the mayor help them once in a while on a project?
Yeah.
Seems like I've seen something where he's been out there helping, so. And I think that mastic is still there, and that's a good thing.
It is.
That's good. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is fiscal year 2025, Fleet Division Budget Proposal. Mrs. Callahan.
Hey, this is the operational budget for Fleet Services for the 2025 fiscal year. Again, a short overview of our facilities on North Front Street. Fleet Services, they maintain about 450 pieces of equipment for the City of Grand Island, anywhere from small mowers to ambulances and fire trucks, so a wide variety. Some of the benefit of having your own Fleet Services is that they are able to respond to an emergency if there is one, that, you know, have some on-call staff that would be, be able to respond 24/7. Also, just having security, and then we do our own fuel system as well. Our budget, overall, not a lot of change for Fleet Services outside of the operating budget. budget, which we can go over in a slide or two. Personnel budget, we're not asking for any more FTEs. We're going to stay at the same staffing level as years prior. Operating and capital budget, a little increase for Fleet Services, a pretty big one for us is a cost share for the safety coordinator position that utilities had added. Public Works is sharing that position and so each division is splitting out a cost of that. It's not a large cost overall to dollar amount wise, but Fleet has a pretty lean budget. That's what we like. So any increases like that kind of show up as some of the bigger ones. We're also going to purchase a new tire balancer this year. And then again, since COVID, everything's been costing more, so putting some extra funds in there for some parts increases, just to make sure we have that budget authority to buy all the parts we need to to do the repairs. And we don't have any capital purchases planned for this year. Revenue, we are going to increase our labor rates 3% to cover some extra personnel costs if they come up. Parts, 25% markup, that's been our standard for a long time. Fuel procurement and sales, we charge a 50 cents per gallon markup on fuel. So that's been pretty consistent over the last several years.
And Mr. Hawsey has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Shannon, have you ever, you know, looking at the labor rates and the price of fuel, do we ever look at what it would be like if you went to a regular gas station or another, just a regular maintenance? Are we higher or lower or about the same or?
That's a good question. So I don't know the exact year, but I'll say maybe three, four years ago, we were doing our fuel prices based on what pump prices were and trying very hard to stay under those prices so that we were competitive. With the cost of our fuel system, the maintenance and the upkeep, it seemed like our labor rates were covering a lot of those costs. So those rates kept going up because we weren't procuring, we weren't making enough on fuel. So at that time, we decided to just charge like a standard markup price for fuel and it it makes it easier to budget as well because we sell about the same amount of gallons every year. So this way, it gives you a little bit better idea how much revenue you're bringing in on your fuel sales. And we can make sure that that revenue we're making on fuel sales is covering the cost to maintain that fuel system that we have, which has given us the ability to take it out of our overhead costs. So we aren't raising labor rates in order to cover those expenses for the fuel system. So really trying to separate those two things out. So I do think we're pretty competitive with, at the pump, but at the end of the day, we have to cover our costs for maintaining that fuel system.
So when you buy gasoline, don't you buy it tax free? You don't pay gas tax on the, on the fuel you buy, do you?
We, I do not believe we pay gas tax on the fuel we buy. There is some reporting that they do quarterly based on what department is buying the fuel from us then. And we, and there's some, either you have to send money in or you get money back based on what department's buying the fuel from you and what the road use is.
Okay, thank you, Shannon.
Welcome.
Nickerson.
When it comes to part of Chuck's question, because the labor rate is, we've got it at 12150. I had worked done in Colorado Springs at a franchise, franchise tire company. And their labor rate was 180 bucks an hour. And I thought, holy cow. So I came back here and I called the one that I work with here all the time and I said, what is your labor rate? They're 180 bucks. He said, ours is 120. You're very close to that. And that was probably two months ago. So I was, I was surprised to see that because 180 bucks an hour in Colorado Springs just blew me away. So we're, we're not looking too bad there.
And we will every couple of years or more often, if we think we might need a big labor rate increase, we will call around and find out what other shops are charging and try to stay in the ballpark. I know there's a few local shops that we are higher than them hourly, but a lot of the bigger shops, especially the, the heavy duty trucks where they take those to work on, we're, we're pretty far below. So I think we're right in the ballpark there. Is there any other questions for Fleet?
Nickerson.
Yep, I didn't know you had the end of the slideshow. And this might be something that Ryan can answer, but I just was curious, the safety coordinator, just curious how that's been going? What, what's our feeling on that? Has it been a success? I don't even know how long they've been in the position.
Overall, that might be a better question for Ryan. We have had Brandon come and help us out with some training already. He's been very diligent about meeting with us and finding out kind of what we think our needs will be. I think it'll take him a little while since it's a brand new position, kind of creating, you know, the backbone for what he needs to be doing all the time. But so far, I've been really pleased and I think Streets and Fleet both feel, it makes you feel a little more confident that you have someone else to go to if you have a safety question or an issue because we're not all experts. And I think he's going to be very thorough in researching and getting back to us and, and being a huge help. I think it was a really good add, in my opinion, a good add for Public Works and for Utilities.
All righty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kircher, you're doing the Solid Waste Division Budget Proposal?
Yes, Jeff was unable to make it, so you're stuck with me.
Thank you, I appreciate you doing this.
So we're going to go over the Solid Waste Budget for the next budget year. Again, just as a reminder, this is an enterprise fund and no general fund revenues. All the revenues are generated by the tipping fees. This is one of the few divisions in the city that has direct competition and it serves both residents of Grand Island and residents. Here's kind of an overview of our existing landfill site. Again, Jeff will always say, and I agree, after learning more about Solid Waste, we are very fortunate with the facilities we have out at the landfill. There's a lot of life left out there, something that we won't have to worry about for a while if we just keep plugging away. Again, as you can see, approximately 17 years life is left in the current active cells and we are looking to finish out cell four, which would give us approximately 25 years life, assuming current rates of use.
Mr. Hawsey.
I have a question, Keith, about the, the life expectancy. So when we first started this process of the landfill out here, I think it was some 30, some years ago, we were looking at 75 year life out of this site. And it looks like maybe we're only going to get 55 years. And what I, what it looks like to me is that because we're taking outside, not just city, county, we're just, because we're taking outside people, anybody who comes and pays a tipping fee, that's what we're taking. And so that's escalated the, the timeframe and how long the, the cell will last. What's, what happens after 25 years and when does that process start? Because I think this is one that you need to start way early in order to get the next cell, you know, in year 26, prepared.
Yeah, so again, it's a long process. We're working through the cell four plans now, which I'll talk a little bit more about that coming up. But when we talk about the life, it's of the active cells plus the future cell. And that, I believe, only encompasses 55 acres of the 300 and some odd acres that we own out there. So just for an example, and I was trying to pull up the aerial, but for example, when we get done, the cell will look like a trapezoid, right?
Right.
We have room beside it to build, they were talking about another trapezoid beside this one after these four cells are filled. Bringing up, why can't we fill between the trapezoids? So I don't even know that calculation, but there is way more life out there than what we're talking about right here.
So when we saw the four cells in that map, there's room in addition to those four circle cells?
Yes, so that's why, again, we're very fortunate in the fact that we have this and that's what I meant by we just keep plugging away. To your point, it takes time. So we're working on cell four now. After that gets done, we start filling it and using it. Maybe 10 years from now, we start talking about what we're going to do in the next step. And with all that land that we have out there, we have the ability, again, you could see, we're only using this upper corner, right? So the footprint of cell four is, you know, essentially this road, right? One through four. So once this is filled, then I could build another trapezoid beside it and I could fill in between this here and the new one over here. I believe there's even the possibility of using areas down south of that existing landfill. So we have the capability of expanding many, many years. This is just the near term. This is kind of the first step of that overall project. So I would approximate, once we get this cell four designed, built, again, maybe in that 10, 15 year, then we probably need to do a study and figure out what's the next step. But there is plenty of land available out there to keep growing, using it for, for the future. I don't know the years of life we have in that expansion or those expansions, but I don't know that it would be a problem for a long, long time.
But do you still have the closure and post-closure funds that you're accumulating?
Yeah.
So that when you do fill them up, there's going to be some process in post-closure?
Yeah, that's, that's required through our permitting with DEE. All of that stuff has to be accounted for, set aside. So that's again, part of the permit. And that's what's really driving the process now is with even the, the expansion of the transfer station, we're modifying our permit. So again, they're looking at all that. Something so simple as we wanted the ability that if something happened to the new transfer station, that we could use the existing transfer station in an emergency. And that threw a big, that's what's dragging that project down. So again, it's a lot of permitting. We want to stay ahead of that. But again, all of those funds are set aside, they're accounted for, for the closure of this portion. That'll continue to grow in that fund as we add more cells in the future.
But land is not the problem here, so we're, we're covered, so.
No, I think, again, land, we are very fortunate. We got, however that was purchased, when they bought it, they did all a favor.
Okay, thank you, Keith.
Mr. Nickerson.
Kind of a follow-up to that, when you're prepping a cell, I was wondering, it's not just digging a big hole and start throwing stuff in it because it's very costly. What all does that entail once you start prepping something like that? There have to be liners installed and?
Yeah, there, and I don't, I don't have any pictures for that, fortunately, but unfortunately, but yeah. So essentially, there's a, there's a clay layer, then there would be a liner. There's drainage underneath it. So any leak, leakage fluids that would drain through the trash are accumulated in those and they're accounted for. And then, once we are done with those phases, then we bring back, and you can kind of see it here, you're going to bring back other soils that are appropriate and put it on top to cap it. There's always groundwater monitoring around it throughout the process that would need to be accounted for as well to make sure that nothing is leaking or escaping the, the actual liner.
Very costly process to prep the cell as well before you start using it.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot more complicated than digging a hole and pushing the trash in.
Okay, thanks, Keith.
So again, we are currently working on the design and permitting of cell four. So once we get those drawings done, some of the specifications of that next step, again, we'll, we'll work with DEE on the permit modifications to allow, again, for the checks and balances, ensuring that we have the proper funds for the closure in the future. Groundwater monitoring, all that stuff would be accounted for in that. So that'll, that'll be a process that we're working through. Again, from this year, notable items, Jeff does a really good job of keeping track of his equipment, stays ahead of the game on that. Very meticulous in that operation and over the years, definitely has that kind of worked out. This year, obviously, the big item was the transfer station. Unfortunately, the permitting on that, like I had mentioned before, is taking a little longer just because we wanted that option of if we need the old one, should something happen to the new one, which I think is very good planning. We want that ability to be in that permit, so we're taking the extra step to do that. The plan was to keep the old building, obviously for cold storage of trucks, get them out of the weather, all those things, which is good. But if we had a, something happened to the other facility, having that able to be used is a very good thing. So we want to make sure that that's permitted properly.
You know approximately how many truck tractor loads go from the transfer station to the landfill daily or weekly or?
I, I'm not even getting a guess. I, yeah, I wouldn't have a guess on that. This year, new tractor trailer, Jeff had a loader and then the actual trailer itself was purchased. Again, we're still working on the transfer station itself. Plans are pretty much complete, we're just waiting for permitting. We'll bid that out as soon as we can after that. So here's the, the proposed 2025 expenses broken out. So this slide here, there's some numbers on here that kind of look a little large. Kind of wanted to explain it a little bit. So the revenue increase, top line, showing a 25% increase. Obviously, we're not going to, we're not going to increase our revenue by that much. We are accounting for a rate increase that we showed in a rate study a year and a half ago. That would make up a portion of this, but a large percentage of it was showing a revenue from a bond. So the plan was to bond both the transfer station and the cell four at the same time into one bond, use our cash reserve to pay down or make those bond payments up until the point where our rates caught up enough that we could pay the remaining bond payments in the future. So this revenue line is showing that influx from that bond. So that's what's driving the, the 25% rate, revenue increase. The personnel services, services increase, obviously, there's step increases and insurance costs that are going up for everybody, so that's accounted for. But 13% does seem a little big. So part of that was due to, we added several employees. The budget for 2024 showed one type of insurance, ended up being a different type of insurance. That's a big swing when we're looking at overall increases. So that is also a big part of that 13% increase. Operating is increasing a little bit, but as everybody has mentioned, you know, fuel cost and repairs and parts and all of those kind of things are, are going up. Jeff uses a certain amount of concrete and crushed rock and different things like that. Fuel prices and, and those material prices are going up. The capital expense increase, again, it's a big increase. We're carrying over the money that we had budgeted for the transfer station, but the 34% increase here is primarily driven by that cell four, which we're budgeting for in this budget year as well. So that's, that's what's making that line look bigger than we, we would hope in a, a capital expense increase. So again, I've kind of mentioned 2025, some of the major, major things. Obviously, these are very big things. Cell four construction, again, this is assuming our permitting goes through and we can get it all built and bid. I'm guessing that probably some of this is going to get rolled into the next year, but kind of want to plan for the best case scenario in case it all aligns and we can get it done. Big purchase on equipment side is the Big purchase on equipment side is the compactor, very large, critical piece of equipment. I think that's rotated out on a five-year basis. This will be the first year of the next machine. Again, everything in, in, in that realm is going up more than one would hope, but it is what it is. They're also looking at a, a UTV at the transfer station to run back and forth between either the yard waste site, the scale, just moving tools, people, all of the things around. It'll make their life a lot easier in that regard as well. So Jeff budgeted that. And then obviously, our transfer station improvements is a very, very large expense.
Compactor is such a unique piece of equipment. Do you think there's gonna be a lot of delays in trying to get that replaced?
I don't, I, I don't have an exact answer. My initial thought would be, not everybody's going out to buy a trash compactor. There's a certain amount of just need in the market. I'm guessing that's a slow and steady thing, but all the parts and pieces that go on the thing might be hard to come by. I, I don't know. I don't know if Jeff has reached out specifically on that purchase or not, but I, I think things are getting better, is what we're seeing other places with, with those kind of purchases on equipment. So, time will tell, I think.
Yeah, we have, we have one. If it would break down, can we use the Caterpillar? What do we use if, if we don't have that one compactor?
I would imagine that we would either try to get it fixed right away. You, you would get by with, with a dozer that you have out there temporarily and work on compacting it after the fact. You might be able to rent a piece of equipment. Again, it's very critical. That's why Jeff is very meticulous on keeping that thing up to date. Like, we can't get behind in something like that, because it'll snowball fast. You're exactly right. It's very, very critical. So, highlights of the budget. Obviously, we are proposing the, the rate increase that was talked about in the rate study that we produced. Again, I think it was about last July, we had talked about that. As you can see, with our, with our proposed rate increase for fiscal year 2025, Grand Island is, is very competitive. We're, we're, have some of the lowest prices with our competitors, even with that rate increase. Even if we look at the final year of the rate increase proposed by the rate study, 2028, we're still very competitive, and this is assuming that nobody else raises their rates in between now and then, which obviously, they, they're going to have to. So, just something to kind of put a little context on this. Our original plan with this too is, the study showed till 2028, but once we get through construction of the cell four and the transfer station, our plan is to do another rate update, just to see if those final ones are needed, or if we could lower them at all. We're estimating a lot of things at this point, so we'll just verify that once that, those projects are done. That's the end of slides I have for that.
Mr. Nickerson?
Anybody have any more questions?
If Keith, or if Jeff were here, I would tell him the same thing, that I'm always impressed with the cleanliness of an operation that deals with trash. And I've been going out there much more frequently now than I wish I had to. My question on this whole permitting process and you are budgeting money next year to start the transfer improvement, do you anticipate that, that permitting process will be completed in a timely manner? I mean, compared to what's already transpired?
I, I hope it is. Jeff follows up with them quite frequently. We're being told that, you know, we should see it, but I don't know what that means. I kind of always ask him the same thing. Well, what does that mean? I think that, from what I understand, they run a pretty lean operation there at this, at this level at the state. And all the permits need to be updated so often. So, they kind of have their own little methodology too. So, you go this year and then five years, I know I have to look at Grand Island again. But in between then, Hastings is gonna go, and then Columbus, and then all the people, and then, so they have their workload spread out evenly. Well, we come in here and we ask for a, hey, can you review mine ahead of time, because I want to build this thing? So it kind of throws the whole system out of balance. That's the best explanation I can get for that. I understand it in that regard, but it's hard when we're wanting to get this moving and, and keep working on these things.
A long time, we've been talking about this for several years now, and my concern, and it's like the Deere's project that you're working on, I'm afraid that I'm gonna be an old gray-haired man before it's all done, and that's what my concern is. I just don't want that to happen. I just want to get them all done. Thanks, Keith.
Good job filling in for Mr. Wadier. Next up, fiscal year 2025 wastewater division budget proposal. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We'll go over to the 2025 wastewater budget. So 24 versus 25, revenue increased is going to increase roughly 6.5%. 6% of that can be tied to the cost of service rate study that we did earlier in the year. The other half a percent is just other revenue sources, tap fees, TVing, things like that. Our personnel services is actually gonna decrease by 4%, and that's due to some turnover we've had. We had some senior guys that are retired and moved on, and so in replacing them, they were at a lower, you know, area on the pay scale. And then operating expense decreases actually 2.5%. We tightened our belt in a few areas, and due to not having, or not foreseeing having to deal with things like the JBS process upset, we won't spend as much on chemicals and operating expenses. These were our fiscal year '24 capital projects. You can see we had about 4.5 million budgeted, and we spent about 4.5 million. So, we were pretty close there. These are the projects for the upcoming year, and I'm gonna go through each of them individually, so we won't spend much time here. We're looking to put all of our collection staff into a single building with warm storage. Right now, we've got them at three different locations, two at the plant and one that's shown here at 1204 North Front. The idea being that we get everybody under one roof that's climate-controlled and not at the plant. Not at the plant, because we have some very sensitive equipment that we use for our TVing, our CCTV of our sewer lines. And out at the plant, the environment is rather corrosive, and so it eats up the control boards and things that help us get that done. So we're looking for land right now. The 300,000 is set aside for either land or an existing building that we could retrofit into what we want. And ideally, that building is centrally located in the city, because the collections guys get the most callouts, you know? And so, being centrally located, it's easier to get to wherever you're going.
Mr. Nickerson?
But you're touching on that, and I, this is kind of a timing thing, because we've got a public works group, street group, that's trying to get out of a building, which is gonna leave a building.
Right.
Is there any timing in that? And I don't know if their building, you know, we're still talking about what would happen with that, that whole move when that happens. But we have buildings that they'll be vacating.
Right.
I don't know if those would work for you, or the timing is just so far off, there's no way that could ever work?
I think the timing's probably gonna be prohibitive in the end. And there's a lot of moving parts there too, with the buildings that we have in the Union Pacific and some of the dealings with them. It doesn't look like it's probably gonna work out, but we have started the discussions, we've talked about it. We've also talked about the potential for kind of a joint area, where if the property that Shannon got was large enough, we could put some of our people there too, or build a separate facility at the same site. That works well, because then the snow is already pushed off when our guys need to get out, and we're working in conjunction as a city. So, we've started the discussion, but I think it's a little too early to say for sure.
Sounds like a good discussion, because here you are budgeting money to buy land, but at the same time, Public Works Group is looking to buy land. So, so I, I see the synergy here. But I, I hate to see people doing separate things, as you said, if you could combine those and it made sense.
Absolutely.
So this, could this maybe be pushed off a year or something, or do you still anticipate going full steam ahead?
Potentially, you know, I think we're gonna have a difficult time even this year finding something that would suit us, land-wise or existing building-wise, just from the survey I've done so far of trying to find something.
Right, it sounds like joining forces would be pretty good.
By its own accord.
Like a, a good plan if we can work on it together. Okay, thanks.
Flow improvements project, we're just wrapping up. So this has been going on for the last two years. We've improved flow measurement and distribution, enhances our process control. The contractors will be finishing up in September and then have to come back one more time for the end of the year to replace the UV gate after our UV system has been turned off for the year. So, this one's coming to an end. Some small projects, we need to replace the controls for our built filter presses, our belt filter presses, create our sludge, which we then haul off to the landfill. They're just getting old, outdated, so we need to get better controls there. We'll be replacing the controls for the four units. We need a backup raw sewage pump. So over the past three years, we've had a couple times where one of our large raw sewage pumps at the Headworks Building has gone down. We've been fortunate that we've been able to use auxiliary pumps to keep things running well, but what we really need is a backup pump in the case that this happens again, and that's what this money is put towards. And then an oil and grease extractor, we bought one last year, and this will be the backup for that one. Oil and grease testing is something that's very costly, and when we don't have our own machine to do it, we have to send it out, and it goes out to like Cedar Rapids, Iowa. So it takes more time, takes more money. This puts us in a position where we control our own thing and, and prevents costly overruns. Fiber network, so this is tied to the existing network at the wastewater treatment plant, as well as connecting our lift stations that the city maintains. It will make a more robust network at the plant, probably going with some sort of a ring-type redundancy, but that's yet to be determined. It upgrades the type of fiber, which allows for single mode versus multi-mode. And then, like I said, connecting to the lift stations rather than using Wi-Fi connections, which can sometimes be unreliable. So a lot of that cost is tied into getting fiber to those lift stations. UV system upgrades, we're currently undergoing a, a study with Olson. They're doing a report for our aging UV system. The UV system gets talked about every year, because for the last four years prior to now, we were doing bank replacements because of some parts that were bought years ago, it didn't work out. We've now got that all done, so we're in a position where we're operating well, but the system itself is just aging out, and so we're needing to replace it. We're gonna get the results of that study hopefully in about a month. And using that, then we'll start doing replacements. Total 1.174, half of that would be in '25, and then I'm hoping the other half in '26. And they'd kind of happen at budget end and then budget start, so. We need to update our master plan for the plant. The last time we had a full report was in 2012. We expanded on that with the BNR and blower study in 2019, as well as some south interstructure information they looked at. But we need to assess, you know, our plant capacity, our, our equipment age, any future growth in the city, all those types of things, that we need an outside consultant to come in and take a look at it and model it and give us a, a full report. A similar collection system master plan will be done in 2027. Manhole rehabilitation, just the engineering portion of it next year. You recall, we do engineering one year and construction the following year when we can. This would be to address the engineering portion of our next manhole rehabilitation project. You can see on the right there, a before and after. So the before shows the concrete that's been eroded, eaten away by things like H2S gas. And then after, they've gone in, they sprayed it with a polyurea, and it seals it and extends the useful life of the manhole for 20-plus years. So, this portion of it will be to engineer the next, determine what the next manholes are that need to be fixed, and then do the engineering paperwork, so that the contractor can come in and execute the work.
That manhole liner, something that can be used over and over, because 20 years goes pretty fast?
Yeah, so OBIC is the manufacturer of it, and they say that it can. So what actually happens is they go in, they, they pressure wash everything, they get a good substrate, clean substrate, they dry it out, and they spray a layer of the polyurea, then they spray a, a layer of foam, and then another layer of polyurea. So, ideally, it doesn't fail over that time. If it does, it's got a 10-year warranty. So in the, within the first 10 years, they come fix it for free. After that, it can be reapplied. Sanitary sewer rehab, so we've talked before about cure-in-place piping. This is where we go in, we put a liner inside a pipe, and then we pressurize it or we use steam to cure that, and it extends the life of our sewer mains. So we've identified areas throughout town that need rehabilitation. You can see pictures here of failing mains and, and how bad that can be. So, we get somebody in there, they go in and line these pipes, and we had a very successful run this past year, working with In Situ Form. They did a great job, and this is a continuation of that to keep our collection system running for many years to come. The Locust Street sanitary sewer repairs, this is in conjunction with the Streets project that's being done from 30, or from Conig to, I forget. But right at the Shuff Street there, where you kind of make the bend, where walnut turns into locust, we're gonna be replacing sewer mains and getting some manholes out of the streets, make things safer for our people. Also increases flow due to grade lines. You know, we look at gravity, when you want to gravity flow something, you can only go so far before you have to lift it again. So, we're making changes to piping and manholes here to make things both more efficient and safer for our folks. And we're doing it while Streets is doing their project, so less concrete repair costs, you know? Working together, that synergy that you were talking about, Mr. Nickerson. And then we've got some money set aside for a, a generic sanitary sewer district. Every year, every other year, you know, someone comes in and they want to establish a sanitary sewer district or a tap district for their neighborhood. It requires a petition process, that they have to get a certain amount of people in the neighborhood to sign up, and then it has to pass through council. And if passed, then we put forth the money to build the infrastructure, with the understanding that it gets paid back over time. 10, 20-year loans, whatever it is, whatever's negotiated. So that's what this money's set aside for. So this is a summary of everything, comes up with about 6 million. So, we saw before, the 2024 projects were right around 4.5, so we're increasing our capital projects by about a million and a half dollars this year. Couple of capital equipment purchases, we need a new dump, another new dump truck for our biosolids. That's used transporting it between the sludge processing to storage. And then also, if we are in a pinch, we can use it as an over-the-road vehicle to haul it as well.
Phil Ossie has a question?
Thanks, Mayor. So my question was really about the fiber network. You had over a million dollars in, in the fiber network.
Yeah.
So, I've seen a lot of different departments have fiber network over the years, and, and we're seeing millions and millions in fiber networks. So my question really is, when you lay a fiber for your purpose, is it just one fiber or nine, you know? Because you could lay 96 fibers in the same tube. So I'm curious, who manages the fiber network that you have?
So, it's managed cooperatively between our maintenance supervisor, John Rundell, and city IT. And then we also work with utilities, because they've got a lot of experience doing that. So we get a lot of consult from utilities and how they manage it and how they do it. We do end up running extra pairs and coiling them up, leaving them for future use and things like that. A lot of this cost is because we're going out to those lift stations, so whether it be aerial or underground, we have to go long distances, and there's no way to really avoid that, to make that point-to-point connection.
And so, IT would be the contact person for the city to manage all of the, all of the, all of the fiber networks?
No, I wouldn't say that. It depends on how it's tied into the citywide network, or if it's tied into the citywide network. So, certain things run outside of the city network, and then certain things run on the city network. So it depends on how it falls into that, as to who ultimately manages it.
So in your million dollars, how much do you think is the fiber, and how much do you think is the labor to put the fiber in the ground?
75% labor, just a guess. Labor's intensive, you know, you're doing overhead aerial work, or you're doing underground trenching work, and it's just, you're paying for the labor. The fiber's fairly cheap.
And so who decided how much fiber to put in the ground? Because I think you're right, the fiber is the cheap part of the piece. But you, you could put in significantly more than you need for future reasons. I just trying to decide who's...
It's not been determined fully yet. We've been consulting with the local engineering firm, and they gave us some numbers to how we got to this number here. So right now, it's their best estimate. We'll sharpen our pencil on that as we get towards actually constructing it.
And I'm assuming there's no dark fiber to be rented from somebody else who actually has fiber where we're wanting to go?
Not that I'm aware of.
Have we looked?
We will, we will look at that before we go, you know?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things, when you're gonna spend a million dollars, I, I just, if there's already fiber in the ground, and I see them burying fiber all over the place. I mean, there, you can't drive around Grand Island without seeing them burying it somewhere. I'm just like, at some point, it seems like there's too much fiber buried. And, and I, if we're gonna invest a million, I want to make sure that we couldn't have ridden on somebody else's fiber, and, you know, and, and made it secure.
So like Matt said, this is what I would call probably a very high estimate. This assumes that we are gonna go to every lift station. Again, and we have been talking with utilities, we, we did may, like... utilities, we did may, like, start to make the contact with a couple fiber companies to see if it's even an option. But this is kind of assuming, or it is assuming, worst-case scenario, that we would use probably utilities' loop, and then we would branch out to our lift stations, which, again, our lift stations are in weird spots, right?
Right.
So, and Ryan could probably answer that a little bit better, too, but obviously, we all have to be careful with what's available or on the network versus what we don't want anybody to see behind the scenes.
Yeah, I just don't see, from the council perspective, I don't see much about it. I don't read much about what we're doing with our city network, but I do see a lot of money going into it, and I'm just, I just want to make sure who's managing it, who's the one source to, you know, to help manage it.
To build off of that point, too, this originally started, we were looking just at the plant. So everything inside the plant is not necessarily gonna be on the city IT network. That's our SCADA system. You don't want any of that stuff out there, all of those kind of things. So that's where it started from. This higher number is if we would look at connecting all the lift stations in, that's where that number's coming from. So we haven't gotten through the whole process yet. This is a budgetary number at this point. We need to dig into the details more. We're gonna have to get more down to, yeah, who has fiber where. We have worked with utilities on where their items are located, working with them a little, too, because they need some equipment in the network close to our lift stations that might be able to help them monitor their water system. So I think people are talking, but we haven't fully developed every detail of this plan yet. I don't know if Ryan, you want to add?
So to give you, you asked about dark fiber, but we have, there's two types of fiber above ground. You've got OPGW, which runs on the static line on our transmission loop around town, and you've got ADS-S, which is, you know, run lower on the pole. We have both. The OPGW has 96 pair that runs around town, and we monitor that, the utility side does. And so I believe what was discussed here is they would do radial offshoots to their lift stations and tie into that dark fiber that we have.
What is dark fiber?
Just unused fiber pairs. And so when we put that in, the cost of fiber is very insignificant to the cost of installation, like, very cheap. And so we have both because we have line guys capable of putting up fiber, and we also, the fiber's cheap. So we have a trunk line through the middle of town and OPGW, so, and the utilities monitors that. We keep three different networks on there, the water network, the control network for the power plants, which are separate, and then the business network. So, and conjoined with them, with the water side, we have a map we've been building out with pressure sensors across town so we can triangulate breaks quicker. And so as a trade-off where they have water in the lift stations, it's good to grab those and bring them into our map. But it's a conjoined effort where we would give up a pair of fiber on our loop, and they just have to do radial feeds in from the lift stations, so.
And these are all overhead lines and none of them are buried?
No, almost everything we have is overhead. It's, OPGW can, it's a loop, so if you sever it, it can triangulate back around. Some of the other ADS-S might be radial, but all our critical stuff goes over that loop. So you could sever it, and you're still okay. So it's how it's set up.
Okay, thank you, Ryan.
And the other vehicle is operations utility vehicle, and we budgeted $50,000, though I think that's probably a little high. We were originally looking at replacing the pickup, but the UTV needs to be replaced more quickly. So we set aside some money, but probably won't spend it all. But want to include a little extra in case we need to put a winch or snow shovel, things like that on there. The operations guys just run the wheels off those things. And funding from the 530 fund. You can see total revenue, we've got just short of $30 million. Total requirements, right around 20, leaves us with an ending balance of about $10 million. So it's a good year. The increase in revenue will really help and will help us set up well for future projects.
Thank you. Sorry, back on the vehicles.
Sure.
Said they run the wheels off of them. How long will these last?
So I think, I looked at the one we have, it was bought, I think, in 17 or 18, and it's got like 10,000 hours on it. I don't remember the mileage. But they last, so if it was bought in 2018, it's roughly a five- or six-year lifespan.
And that's the...
That John Deere Gator there.
Okay, that's the $50,000 Gator, not the $200,000 dump truck?
No, 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 no. The dump trucks, the one we'd be replacing, I want to say is 99, model year.
You only get 25 years?
Right.
Come on, okay. All right, that's all I needed to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nickerson?
Matt, how long have you been here now? Time flies, just kind of curious.
Just short of three years.
See, time flies. Well, good, good for you. Hey, I've had a couple of questions. One is about our sanitary sewer district again, got a million dollars set aside. Do we, are you aware of any high-risk areas here in town that yet might be pursuing something like that?
Most recently, not necessarily high risk, but we were approached by Northview, which is out off of Highway 2, near kind of the northwest school area. So it's a private HOA that's got a private lift station. When it was built, you know, I don't know that the residents there fully understood what they were getting into with ownership of that. And of course, over time, houses sell, and the guy who developed it is long gone and all that kind of stuff. So now they're looking at, you know, 20 years out or whatever we are, there's starting to be a lot of costs associated with it. They're gonna have to probably replace the pump at some point. Brick and mortar fails, too, so upgrades to that. I'm sure somebody has to mow that lot to keep it looking nice so that it's not a eyesore in the neighborhood. So all that combined has brought some people forward to come and see Keith and ask about the potential for a TAP district. We've looked at that area specifically in the past, and we've decided how we would do it, or we have a preliminary plan for how we would do it. And so the number is kind of based on that. But there are, I can't tell you the number, Roger could, but not Roger Scott, but we have a number of areas throughout town that are on septic that are surrounded by sanitary sewer that could be connected. But it really comes down to constituents, whether or not they want to put forth the effort to get the petition, to bring it in front of council, get it approved, and then are willing to sign up for some sort of a loan or however they want to finance it. That's really the big part of it. And so I think that the people that want to get it done have a hard time getting their fellow neighbors to sign up for it, so.
And then the other question I had was, did you ever hire a fat soils and greases manager?
Yeah, yeah. DeRicque Antonio is our FOG program manager, and she's been doing great. She hit the ground running. She's had a lot of help from some of our other staff, in particular, our stormwater program manager, who does a lot of that forward-facing social media-type stuff. And so she's been, if you watch Facebook and stuff, you'll occasionally see from Public Works, you'll see FOG facts, they're called. She's also going out and working with the food service providers, all the different restaurants around town, checking to see what they have for oil and grease capture and whether it's up to code and that kind of stuff, providing information, just, you know, pamphlets, things like that, staying in front of people to constantly have that message out there. And also bringing in the local plumbers to the plant, to our conference room, and talking to them about it and how they can help spread the message. So, yeah, she's been really good so far.
And how is she being received in the restaurant industry? Do they, they're not crazy about it?
About like you'd expect.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was wondering, so.
Yeah, you know, they're generally very good to work with. You know, the majority of people that she encounters the first time is not the owner or the franchisee or whatnot, so they're just kind of, mm, you know, throw up their hands. But as they dig deeper, most owners are very willing to work with us, you know, and they just say, just show me where in code it says I need to do this, and I'll, you know, I'll comply. So...
And the program purpose of this person, and a lot of people wondered why you would want someone like that, but when you're dealing with the restaurant industry and dumping oil down the drain, which is now creating plugs, there are alternatives to doing that, and I guess that's what she's working with them on, so you don't, I mean, there's best practices when you're dealing with these oils and greases.
Correct. Fat soils and greases have a real detrimental impact on a sewer system. Besides creating fat burbs, which will clog pipes and then create backups, as fat soils and greases deteriorate, they create a lot of H2S, hydrogen sulfide, and that's the gas that's the hardest on our sewer mains and in particular, our manholes. We looked at the manhole earlier that had been degraded quite a bit. That was a manhole that was seeing a lot of H2S. And so as these fats and oils and greases degrade, they're creating a lot of that. So if we can keep it out of the system to begin with, we've already extended the life of our infrastructure by getting rid of that.
And I'm wondering, I don't know what our ability to do this is or if it's even legal. I don't know. There's a legal question. But the plumbers that are dealing with big plug-ups in these oils, I wonder if there's a way that we can know that to help educate these folks. I don't know how that'll all work, but that's kind of the whole premise of this as well, is if a restaurant is having plugged-up traps and all this stuff and plumbers are out there, what, how's, how can they communicate that to people that we can go and try to make sure that doesn't happen again or help them resolve that?
That's a great question. And we actually just had an instance here a couple days ago. One of the local plumbers called Dana and said, hey, I need you to come out and take a look at this. They're pouring something down the drain. I'm not sure what it is. So her going out, seeking the plumbers, having them come in, do educational sessions, has opened those doors, and now they feel comfortable communicating directly with her to say, hey, I think you should take a look at this. So...
Sounds like a good fit for this system. Super. All right, glad to hear that. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Mr. Ossie?
So Mitch's comment on Northfield kind of sparked my interest here. So Northfield was a developer-owned lift station.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody that lives there is on city sewer.
No, they're on a...
They don't, they don't pay us any bill on the sewer bill?
So Northview...
Northview.
Was, was constructed, and it's, again, in the subdivision agreement, that the lift station itself would be privately owned, and the force main from that lift station to the sanitary sewer would be privately owned until such time that it could or would be hooked up to public sewer system. They chose to build it that way, and, you know, they had several options at the time of what they wanted to do. So that's the option the developer took, and they have a city main, and I was kind of bringing this up to kind of maybe show you. There is city sewer that serves the area, gravity to the lift station, and then the lift station pumps it and carries it up to a gravity outlet. So the gravity system in the neighborhood does not necessarily go anywhere. It feeds all around here. There is a pipe that extends out under North Road, which we extended the pipe under North Road when we built that a couple years ago. This pipe here is dry today, so the pump station's right here. So the infrastructure is in such that when the sewer really needs to expand from here out this way, once this would develop, this is available to hook up to that. So, I mean, they have options. They could keep doing what they're doing until town grows to them. They could hook in, just like any other development that's paid for along the way. Or, like Matt mentioned, they could look at doing a TAP district or some sort of a district to get the sewer up to them faster, which could have been done in 2005 when that subdivision was created. Or we also looked at an option, the lift station that they have is not maybe to the standard that we would operate our lift stations at. We looked at an option of, if you want to build a new lift station and we just take it over, that's an option, too. I think everybody out there kind of expressed that they would rather have gravity and not have to worry about that, which, again, we have multiple lift stations in town all over. That's why we're building those to a different level, because we need them to operate all. So there's a lot of different options. This particular thing's a little complex. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
So I think that's just one of the pockets, and I, you know, understand there's maybe a dozen other pockets like that, that, that could be in that million dollars if they would, if they would do a petition to do a sewer...
Yeah, another one that, that we've looked at more recently, too, was down here on Staley Park Road. This area here is not currently served. So we put together information for the property owners, worked on a cost estimate so that they have some real numbers to digest. So the reason Matt puts that in there is just what if one of the 15 would decide that, hey, we're gonna get together as a neighborhood, we want to petition the sewer in, all of those things. So we don't really have one in specific. It's just kind of a placeholder, budget authority, something that we're accounting for in that regard.
So the, what would stop people from creating a district is the price tag, and the price tag, from what I've heard, is anywhere from $20,000 to $40,000 a homeowner? Is that approximately right?
Yeah, approximately. It depends. Everyone is different. Obviously, the one up at Northview is a little bit different because we're only looking at getting the sewer outlet to them. So they have the infrastructure in the streets already. So we were looking at some different ways to kind of calculate that. But most of the other ones are probably typically within that $20,000 to $40,000 range, depending upon the conditions. We have done in the past, we've gotten some funding that allowed us, in low-income areas, to make it a little bit more cost-effective to do it. But that's not guaranteed to get those funds, so it's kind of on a case-by-case basis. If the stars align, somebody brings that into us, they fit within the parameters for some of those grants or dollars, that we could say this is a certain low-income area that we can qualify you for, and we can help bring the cost down. But again, all of that stuff kind of has to line up. And the hard thing about all these districts is you might need it today, but I just put a new septic system in last year, and I want to get my money out of it, right? Because I spent all the money. I don't want a sewer bill now because I fixed that. And then about the time mine's wore out again, then yours is gonna be ready, you know, and it's just a vicious, we've seen that happen a lot of times.
We allow those pockets to grow, I mean, more of them to be built today? If someone came in and wanted to do the same type of pocket, because I think the problem as a municipality is the homeowners didn't know about it when they bought the house, moved in, all of a sudden, the sewer doesn't work, they're calling you or they're calling me. They're calling one of us, and we're trying to explain this to them, and it's a bit of a historical problem to explain. Do we still allow that type of...
Building code dictates that if you're within 200 feet of existing infrastructure, you have to connect. So it depends, you know, if they were to build out in an area that doesn't have the structure already, then they can do separate and potentially, yes, that will continue.
So, yeah, and what Matt said is correct, but would we allow a new development within city limits not account for sanitary sewer? I don't think that that would be the case. I, they're gonna figure out how to hook on. Unless it's a big acreage subdivision or you got 10-acre parcels or something like that, I don't think we would go down that road. The Northview situation, you know, that was before my time at the city. But I think part of the reason for this was, does the city dictate the market? If the Realtor or the developer said, well, maybe I can build a subdivision and it's gonna be a little less expensive, but we have to compromise on this one thing, you know, I don't know that. I would like to think that it wouldn't happen, though. I mean, there's options. They could have built a different lift station, or they could have petitioned for a TAP district up there 15 years ago or 20 years ago.
Yeah, it's just, we have, with the development, we have allowed substandard roads. We've allowed a number of, you know, substandard things in the community, but they ultimately come back at some point when they wear out or need to be repaired, and that's when the challenge comes back in. But, okay, thank you very much on your answer for the million.
All right, final slide. Future project expenses related to the projects we've already spoken about, out for the next five years. Any final questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Next is fiscal year 2025 electric capital improvements and equipment budget proposal. equipment budget proposal. Mr. Schmitz.
There we go. All right, we'll start with electric. Before I start off, I was going to touch on your safety coordinator comment. Brandon's been awesome. Brandon Cluthy's our new safety coordinator. Within a couple week, a couple months of being hired, we had a mock May Day where he had coordinated a helicopter landing at PGS in St. Francis, bringing a, an ambulance out. And we went through the whole execution thing, the, the mock, how you treat a burn victim at the hospital. And it was a, it was a good ordeal. He's had fall arrest stuff. And to clarify, October 1st is when that position becomes conjoined with Public Works. So Public Works hasn't experienced the full access, although he has been working over there as well. So he, he's been amazing. I could sit here and go on and on. In fact, we're, we're doing mutual aid right now with Lincoln and O-M-P-P-D. We have crews, as you've probably seen online there. And the first guy to get a call, because the network he's already built out with other utilities, was our safety coordinator. He gave me a call this weekend or a week ago, and was like, hey, these guys called me. And I was like, how'd you get in contact with these people already? But he's built out that network. He's got us on boards. And he, he's been amazing. He's been fascinating how quickly he's moved. So that's a plus. And so as I do the budget here, I also have Darren Butner with me. He's one of the new positions we added this winter, a financial analyst. So Darren put together a lot of these budget documents and numbers that you're seeing today. So I wanted to give him credit for that as well. With that, we'll get going. It's not going to be as crazy since we did the rate increase conversation already and the restructuring last winter. So should be a little more streamlined here. So personnel services increase 10%. And the reason we're doing that is because the preliminary IBW union contract says a 6.6%, and then a coal on top of that. So that's what we're anticipating for budget purposes. 16% electric budget is employee wages. So we're fairly small compared to what a lot of funds are. Last year it was 15%. So that increase barely dents that overall percentage. No new FTEs are being requested at this time. Admin and operating increase of 1.4%. And part of the reason for that is, is FM Global had a good year. So they're giving us a discount on our insurance rates, which are offsetting the minor cost increases in that area. So that's helpful. Cost of power, we're anticipating 0.8%. So power prices are down this year. So we're anticipating kind of a continuation, which is basically, our forecast is based on natural gas that drives the power industry. Distribution O&amp;M, 10.7%. But remember, distribution O&amp;M is heavily labor. So there's a corresponding number there. And then down below, you can see kind of what the percent of the remaining budget is for other items. As far as capital projects, transmission, we want to continue to work on security upgrades. That's been a big thing in the news in the last year. Distribution breakers, building out our inventory. We've got three on order. We need to order three more. And then relay and metering upgrades. We just finished upgrading all our distribution relays. So next up is the transmission relays and some of the outdated meters. So that's on our list this fall. We have two windows on transmission, fall and spring, because in the summer, you don't want anything out of service because of the loads. And then we have six transmission poles that we had a company come on in and do an investigation here a year ago. And there were some bad ones. So those will get replaced. Overhead, overhead within that number is AMI and LED. And both AMI and LED were at about 80% installed in town. So 80% of our meters are LED, or 80% of our lights are LED, 80% of our meters are AMI. So we're making ground there. Underground, really taking the brunt of all the new infrastructure. That's where we see a lot of our cost increases. Everything new that goes in is mostly underground. Outside contractors is our cost for outside boring company. Third Street HVAC, just some old HVAC units. We're gradually working through those. We have 11 on the building. So this would get two more replaced. And then a locator for the underground group. Other items, NERC firewall for PGS, that's compliance-driven. Fire suppression upgrades for the gas turbines, concrete walks to give more access out of the mud over there, scissor lift to replace our old scissor lift. And then the remaining payment on the solar farm, which is about 2.8 million, anticipated next fiscal year, so we're 20% of the overall cost. The rest will have been paid this year and last year. Vehicles, again, what's in red is stuff that was purchased in previous fiscal years or purchased, approved in previous fiscal years. Due to lead times, these things are up to two years out. And, and then you've seen me come through with a couple change orders on chassis and stuff. So with two years, price increases. And the mentality out there today is we can either take the price increase or you can, we'll give it to someone else. And that's, that's been an industry issue. So as far as new stuff, we want to get out ahead, knowing that a Digger Derrick's probably going to be a two- to three-year order. So that's why I have $0, but I want it as a line item. And then we got two three-quarter ton trucks, one for PGS, one for PCC, just outfitting the trucks slightly different. And then the safety coordinator to outfit that. That'd be a cost share between Public Works and utilities to, right now, we've got him running in in a loaner vehicle from PGS. So vehicles, that's what we're looking at. This is just something for information to share. This is kind of what the utility, electric utilities portion of each budget is that we reimburse City Hall for right now. In lieu of tax, which is, will be called the city dividend fee here shortly, that's anticipated for next year. So one of the byproducts of the rate increase is this also goes up. So it was 3.3 million last year. Your rate increase, this becomes 3.6. This is kind of an overall snapshot of our situation. So we've kind of adopted a new fiscal policy as far as minimum cash reserve. And so 30% of O&amp;M add back depreciation. So what our number really is right now is around 26, 27 million for minimum cash reserves. We anticipate to be down around 30, 31. Depends on when our reimbursement from our solar farm comes back, which is $4 million. If that comes back this year, we'll be about 31. If it's a year off, depending on when we can process it through the federal government, it could be, we could be right at that minimum next year. So that, and so you can see how the rate increase has stabilized the green line. That's our cash balance. So that's good. Everything's looking good. And remember, in 2028, we free up $4 million as our debts paid off. We're going to have to make decisions. But that, so the future's looking stable right now. This I like to put in here, so there's a summer winter bill. And it's really not fair, because to be honest, we passed the rate increase. And I can tell you right now, my counterparts at Hastings and MPPD, who supplies power to Carney, are talking about going forward with proposals for rate increases. So these are the numbers without their discussions happening yet, and ours being applied next year. So this is a typical residential summer and winter bill. I've got other slides. But a lot of, there's a lot of smoke and mirrors when you see rates. So I like to provide everything, because that's what really matters. Customer doesn't care if you're, if it's, this is really electric, this is really not a, going to the utility or whatever. This is your bill. This is everything. So I like to show the entirety. That's electric. I can stop there and answer any electric-related questions.
Just a question. The higher tech projects you've had where we've got the AMI meters and the LED lights at 80% is pretty darn good. What's the plan on the remaining 20 when you're looking at AMI meters in particular?
So the AMIs, as you get towards the end, you get into these installations where the house service is, needs work or something, right? So you get in, so we're getting to the point where as you narrow it down, it slows down. We have to work with the building department on, do you have to do an upgrade to the service? What, what, the oddball situations, right? So we're not quite there yet, but we're getting very close to that point. And what the AMIs of, what I wanted to mention, that gives me a segue, but we have an MDM now, which basically shows us how loaded a transformer is from the AMIs feeding it. And so one of my electric, electrical engineers is actually, one of his things is he's going through and going, okay, last time we did a subdivision, we fed four houses off this transformer. Now, looking at the loading, I think we can get six or seven off that same transformer. So now we're bringing costs down by operating smarter because of the technology we have. It's also, they've also allowed us to triangulate outages. We triangulate a lot of outages without a call from a homeowner at all anymore. They'll, they'll, the dispatchers will notice the alert that an AMI is out of power, and they'll dispatch a crew. And the person might not even be home yet from work, and the crew's being dispatched. So that's a, that's another thing which allows us to have this discussion when the union contract comes about wider living boundaries, because we're able to triangulate faster, right? So there's a benefit all around, which allows you to recruit better. So, anyway.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Hawsey.
Thank you, Mayor. So Ryan, I have a question about outages. So it's highly unusual for us to ever experience an outage. But I've had two of them in the last two weeks. I don't know. The last one only lasted 20 minutes. But is there something going on in the summer that cau, is causing those?
Animals. And so we had a, we had, we had, we actually had two feeders. So over the course of the year, you might have half a dozen feeder trips. I mean, those are the rare ones. We had one here, must have been end of June, around that time, we had a bird get in a substation between two phases, and it took out the whole south side of town. The platage was out. This was a Saturday night, I believe. And we got a call, all kinds of calls. And it's an oddball thing, but it took it out. And so you've got to go out and diagnose it. So the, what happens in a situation like that, it locks out the breaker from, the breaker from reclosing. And so you want to go out and investigate, because you don't want to close something in without knowing what happened, right? So that's the delay you're seeing. The last one, we had a, another bird getting a cutout, catch on fire, and started a grass fire over on St. Louis Park, took out another feeder. So when you take out a feeder, those are the ones that take out, could take out 1,000 customers, right? And so a fuse fault, we try to do everything, we set our fuse fault. So a fuse fault will take out four houses before the feeder sees it and trips, right? But every now and then you get that animal in there in the wrong spot. It's squirrels and birds. So if you can figure those out for us.
Send pictures if you.
Yeah.
No, I know, I know what they look like. Then I called the 385-5461 number, and I got routed to somebody that wasn't in Grand Island, because he asked me what city I was in.
How long ago was this? When was this?
Couple days, a couple days ago.
Okay. We just switched, we switched to a new company that's given us better access. And it's called Doppler. So, so give you a little feedback. They had contracted since 2015 with MPPD to answer the phone. So when you have a mass outage, the dispatcher can do what he does while the phone comes in. Well, we were paying MPPD an exorbitant amount. So we went looking. And we found a company that actually offers more feedback at less than half the price. And so we just made the switch last week. And what that does, so now what we're getting is this company now will send, when, when our guys get rolled, comes to dispatch, and dispatch pushes it right out to our line guys, but they get a picture of your house on the blocks. They just know what your house looks like when they get called. They get a picture. So if you send a picture when you're on the phone, if you send them a picture, that gets routed to our guys. And then the write-up of what was called in gets routed to the, to our people. And you can actually opt in to get a response too, where our dispatch, if a person opts in, can send a text back to you saying, hey, it's fixed or whatever. So there's heat maps. So we've got a lot more data that we can share. Another thing, lets us triangulate quicker, spread information quicker. It, it's a weekend. So it's like anything else, we're, we're massaging the process yet. But that's what I was asking, two days ago. So, yeah, you caught right in the switch, probably.
And, and she might have been one of the first customers, because by the time that the power came on, before we were done with the call.
Okay.
So it was one of those, is she was going through a checklist. And, and it was one of, it was interesting, because it's the first time I talked to someone who's not from Grand Island. And I'm sure that there's 100 of my closest friends that are calling in at the same time, you know, with the same issue.
If you'd called since 2015, you would have talked to someone out of Norfolk. So.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So, but.
I haven't called before, so.
Yeah, yeah. But they're able to deduce real quickly if it's a single outage now, like if it's a single item outage, or if they're individual issues. So it's, it's been a, it's, it's going to be a good benefit, and it's half the cost. And the, the call center, one of their main call centers is out of Topeka. So.
I just hadn't had to reset my clocks for, you know, for a long time. And all of a sudden, it's twice in, in 10 days.
Yeah.
Did they tell you how to do that?
Yeah, they didn't. No.
Have anything else? Or a jump to water? All right. Water's been a busy entity too. So water, same 10% personnel. Personnel, water's a higher percent. We just added two new positions last year. And the year before, we added a position. So one position was when we took over service lines. Second, two positions were for the lead service work. So admin and operating, it's not quite what it seems. You see a 17.9%, but one, one of the big ticket items in there is we're doing a 10, a 20-year study. And so that 20-year study, if you reel that back, you get down to 9% increase, which is in line with a lot of the labor and stuff. So cost of pumping and treatment, that has, continues to go up. And I hit on that when we were doing the rate increase talks, which is our chlorine, our phosphate, and our uranium treatment. So, and then distribution, that's where the lead copper stuff hits. And I'll, I'll do a spiel on that here at the end where that stands. But, and then down below, you can see the other cost shares. Distribution projects. So water, we're piggybacking what Streets is doing on the Locust Street project next year. And as they have that tore up, we're going to put a 12-inch water main in to replace an outdated 6-inch main. They'll give us a 12-inch main from the south side of town all the way to downtown. So that's part of next year's works. Unplanned water main districts, 225, that's two purposes. That's the, where our labor hits, when our guys go and do inspections and oversight on new subdivision work, because we don't know when it's coming a lot of times. But we have to have pot of money for that. Or if someone comes in and wants to do a tapping district, this gives us some flexibility mid, mid-year. The building upgrades, those we may do, we may continue to talk. We want to put money in there, though, because there may be grant money available. It's in the, the historic district, and it's next to the fire station, which is being talked about with different things. So there may be some legwork there where we can actually get some money to do these instead of funding it directly. So. Well-filled improvements. This year, we upgraded, we have two trains on the uranium treatment facility. So this year, we upgraded one. Next year, the plan is to upgrade, we're working through the second one. It's given us more throughput with the same facility. So this is the other half of that project. Elevated storage grading, so that's the land we own to the north of the water tower. The, our plan is to grade that out, get the drainage straightened out, because there's, with the trail coming in and a lot of stuff going on, the plan is to get that kind of cleaned up. Infowater, that's our, our model for our entire water system. We actually had money last year. We set that aside for other things. So we want to put it back in this year. And then the inventory for lead service line replacement, so that's the actual materials we're using. There's lead time on those, so we like to get out ahead of that. And then the vehicles, so the dump trucks have become even more important with the lead service work. So we aim to replace the 10-yard and then the smaller one. Again, cost share, it's more for information for water. Payment in lieu of tax, water pays 2%. And then we also transfer 75,000 to the building department as part of the backflow program. Here's water's graph. So water, we're doing a rate increase this year, but we're also seeing significant cost increases. So that's why you see the line continue. And then as we get into next year, where we do the second rate increase, we level out that cash. So water's cash, I believe, we intend that line to bottom out around 3.7 million. I believe that's it. And our, our minimum cash reserve is 2.7 million. And that's actually a good place to be, because with the lead service work, you spend the cash before you get reimbursed. So it's nice to have a, a small cushion above your minimum for that purpose. Lead service replacement update. All right. The program has been, it was with any government thing, you figure as you can go. So we had to do, when we got approved last fall, we started down the task. We built, built up inventory. We had to expand workforce, which you guys approved us for. And we had to buy equipment. And then we also had to do traverse through the state NDE and all the red tape. So we added out staff. We had a guy, John Gannon. He got his master plumber license, which has been beneficial. We added Gus Amador, who's bilingual, and he's also got some electrical background. So he's the guy going in houses. We, we added out two water shop FTEs. We got a hydro vac in. And so we've built out the workforce for that. So the next step was discovery. So for the discovery phase, so far, we've just went and uncovered. So for the discovery phase, so far we've just went and uncovered 444 out of 3,000 services. So the aim of the program was 10 years from the beginning. So that's 15% we've uncovered. So we're ahead of pace on the uncoveries. So it's, it's replacement. We've replaced 33. So it's like, okay, how do we amp this up, right? So we, we went through the process. Our people worked with legal, like how do we structure this so we get people interested? Because let's face it, everybody's out there's got enough work. They've got all the work they want right now. So we thought we had it structured in a way, bid it out, had one bidder, and it was extremely high. So maybe we've been reanalyzing about doing it in-house versus out. And I can't really speak yet, but we've had some good conversations where we have a promising path forward that hopefully I can talk about here in the next few weeks. But we haven't had an option, so we're going to see where that leads. But that would allow us to possibly do a significant amount and get on schedule where we want to be. So with that said, the guys are doing really good. Like I said, they've been in houses. Another byproduct that we're finding of this whole process is we've uncovered a lot of grounding issues in houses. So one thing they check is to see if things are grounded properly. Otherwise it puts a charge back on the pipe and it could shock your neighbor, in fact. And so they're cleaning this up as they go through. So the byproduct is up to 3,000 houses in town that are on the lead service list are having their grounding checked in their house and fixed in a lot of cases. So possibly we're preventing a fire from happening that we will never know about. So that's been good. And then here's our water rates. So again, our, I'm showing our rates with our increase built in and the others are still in talks. So we're sitting real good. And then the last slide is just a standard residential customer who's got water and electric with the city. This is how you compare. So we're, I believe it's 27% cheaper than Carney is what your annual cost would be. These are annualized costs. And 29% cheaper than Hastings on an average water and electric bill combined. And it's important, I think, to look at it combined, because we staff those combined, right? So there's a subsidy, you can say there isn't, but there is a cross. So collectively is, is how we, we work together. So it's good to look at that in that manner. And I think that's my last slide. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you for your update on the lead pipe project, because I've watched some of the guys' work. I was impressed, first of all, how fast they do it. And I was assuming it was a little hole that, but it's about a one foot square and they go straight down. It's pretty impressive to watch. And then you think about the amount of work that's involved. You don't just do that. Now they're taking photos, they're documenting it on their little iPad or whatever they use. And this is all information that's going in for determination of what's going on. So I've been really impressed. Now I'm also kind of surprised and I guess glad that you're finding grounding issues and that's being repaired at no cost to the homeowner?
If we can. So what, what happens is we'll get, we've worked out a, a relationship between the building department, our guys. And if we can, we'll bring our underground guys in and we'll reestablish that grounding connection if possible. If it, if it's easy fix, if it's something more extensive, where you've got to add another grounding rod or something then, or if there's a, a panel, something with your panel that makes it, you know, a fire hazard. Now it's another level, right? So now you've got to get an electrician in. But if it's something simple, we'll, we'll reestablish that grounding connection. So basically at a house like that, you, you need two grounding connections in the older houses. You have to have a grounding rod and then you have to have at least, I believe it's 10 feet of pipe for any seat, 10 feet of copper pipe. So if we sever your service and put in poly, as long as there's 10 feet left in the ground, you still have a valid ground. Now a new, new construction, you've got an EFA ground, which is the rebar that they pull out of the concrete wall. And now you're grounded the, the concrete. So you can just have a single ground for that. So a lot of these houses you go into, that grounding to the pipe might be out. Or some of them, they're finding where there's no ground connection at all anymore and that's really dangerous, so, yeah.
Now that becomes, it's one of those things through discovery that the homeowner has a problem. And is there anything that's done that says you cannot, well, you've identified a problem that you can't fix? What are those steps to make sure that that problem is fixed, I guess?
From, from our standpoint, if it's something that we can't reestablish the ground on our end quickly, we turn it over to the building department and then they work that avenue from a compliance side. And I can't speak to how it goes after that point, but they, they've got, we've got a good relationship worked out where all sides are talking and working together. And it's, the process is, is working right now. So the, the last piece is trying to meet this quota, right? And so I bet, first it was, do we need to add more F T Es to try to go get this ourselves? I want to wait on that, because I, I think we may have an avenue and I, hopefully I can bring that in a few, few weeks, but we'll see.
And when you, you've done 33 replacements already and this is no small task either, because you're digging up yards, you're doing a lot of stuff there.
So let me add to that. So of the, of the ones we've discovered so far, 60% have been lead. So there's, of the list we have of possible lead, we're finding 60% to be a yes. So if, if that continued, that'd be 1,800 services, right? So in 10 years, that's 180 a year to stay on target, right? So 33 is not going to cut it, so we got to amp that up. And that's what we're looking for. And that, it's not just us. Everybody in this program's in the same boat, whether it's M U D, L E S, Carney, trying to meet that target, right? That's a hard ask when you've got a plumbing community that basically has all the work they can possibly want right now and more. So that's the trick. And, you know, I get it. And, and the other thing is you're going to, to a, a group of people who have all the work they want and you're saying, hey, come do this. But you gotta do all the paperwork that comes with federal, federal jobs, you know, and the bonding and all that. So I, I get it, you know, but that's where we're at.
So of the 33 that have been replaced, was it with the bidder that threw the high bid up or was it just through other groups?
Some of them have been through plumbers on an isolated basis where, where it wasn't done as, say, part of the program. It was, hey, had a water main break. Oh, it ended up being lead. Okay, we'll cover it. And then the large majority of those are our people. Like when they're doing discovery, they might discover a leak or something and then we just fix it right there. We just don't have the staff right now to do it en masse.
Okay, well, good progress. I'm impressed that they've got 444 discovered already, I mean, at least dug.
They're, they're doing good work. Our guys at the water shop have really been doing good, trying to stay out ahead on the inventory ordering and the guys, keeping the guys busy. Because they, you've got to remember, they, they've got all their regular tasks too. Even though we've added people, we're keeping two people busy all the time on the discovery, so, yeah.
Good job. I've been impressed with what they've been doing so far.
Mr. Hawsey.
Thank you, Mayor. So Ryan, a week ago, we had a health board meeting with the central district health department. And they have a lead abatement program and, and they told us that they were working with you. Their side of it, they were saying that they would find lead problems with faucets and/or paint, you know, in, inside the home. And so they have a whole different program in, in addition to the water line issues. So it was nice to hear that they have a program and they're attacking it from that side as well and we're attacking it from this side, so.
Yep.
I'm just glad that, that you two are communicating so that each of you are working with each other, so that we're not.
We'll run our program all the way up to the backflow meter in the house and any modifications that it takes to correct that when we get in the house. So as you can, another trick with bidding this out is every house is different, every situation is different. And when you get in the house, you don't necessarily know what you're getting into, right? So it's a lot of unknowns. It's, it's a, it's a process, but I mean, when you've got 0% interest and 57% to 62% forgivable, that's a, it's hard to say no. When you get all that infrastructure and fix grounding issues, it's a win all around.
So lead pipes aren't, they don't conduct electricity, do they?
Well, electricity will move through anything. Electricity will move through ground too, but yes, it will, it will travel. All the grounding, so, so how Grand Island is structured? I think we know of one lead pipe that I've ever seen between the house and the curb stop. All of our lead is between the curb and the court. So again, you need 10, 10 feet of grounding, right?
Yep.
So most of the line towards the house side is galvanized. So if you have lead, it's almost guaranteed it's galvanized or is replaced at one time. So that galvanized will conduct and establish a ground. But yeah, if you get a high enough current, it will, electricity will move where it wants to go. It's going to go to the, the lowest potential, so.
Okay, thanks, Ryan.
Going to find a way back to the transformer one way or the other.
Thank you. Thanks to all of our city presenters and thank you council members. You've completed our agenda. We are adjourned.